Ms. Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Schindholz.
Here.
Ms. Walden.
Here.
Dr. Lee.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a forum present. Welcome everyone to our meeting. We did not take any action in our first executive session. We do welcome all of you to the meeting this evening. If you will stand for the prayer and pledge, please. And let's pray. As precious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you provided for us. We praise the Lord for all the many blessings that you've given us. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon this community and we thank you for the opportunity to serve it. We ask the Lord that you would lead us and guide us in the direction that you would have us go in the work that we do for our community. Help us to do those things that would help our neighbors and friends and please you also. Be with our state national leaders as they do the same and always be with those who serve this country both here and abroad. Those that are in harm's way, keep them safe and bring them back to us. We thank and we praise you for all that you do and we ask these things in your holy name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, entertain a motion for the adoption of the March 25th council meeting minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and now, ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Thank you. That pass is next. On the agenda, over the past several years, we've looked forward to having Meredith Lipson of Malden and Jenkins to come and present our audit and I'm very confident that we're going to look forward to it tonight. So I call on you, Meredith, if you'll come forward and give us a report on our audit.
Thanks. Again, my name is Meredith Lipson. I'm with Malden and Jenkins CPA firm and I'm going to give you kind of an overview of the annual financial statement audit, which was as of June 30, 2013. Our report was finalized, issued, and submitted to the state in December, which is, the due date is December 31st. So you guys were several weeks ahead of the due date. And I believe, my understanding is that you all tonight are just now getting a copy of your CAFER.
Yes.
So I know you haven't had time to go through it and formulate questions. So I'm going to kind of give a brief overview like I usually do of the financial statements themselves and then we'll switch over to that little thin, clear-bound document that I brought with me and kind of, we'll go through some graphs and some of the recommendations that came out of the audit. And then that way, if you all, once you have time to spend with the financial statements, as I know you all are dying to do, and if you have questions, I'm happy to come back or you can always contact me with any questions that you've got. So, the comprehensive annual financial report, which is that thick document that you've got, you all have been preparing this and submitting it to GFOA for quite a number of years and have been receiving the certificate of achievement. You all go above and beyond what's required of the state. If you just submitted what the state wanted it to be about this big. But you put a lot of extra effort, a lot of statistical information in it, and that's something to be very proud of because you have received the certificate of achievement for 20-plus, maybe even 30-plus years. So-
They're on the wall back here.
On the wall.
Coming down the hallway.
So again, something to be very proud of. Our opinion is on the first two numbered pages. We issued an unmodified opinion. It used to be called unqualified. They changed the terminology for some reason, so it's now unmodified. But it's still the same thing. It's still the clean opinion, the one that you want. As always, the financial statements are the responsibility of management and the council and our responsibility is to express an opinion based on our audit procedures. And again, that was a unmodified, clean opinion. Just following the financial audit report is the management's discussion and analysis. And I always tell all the councils and commissions I meet with, if you don't have the time to really go through that whole document, this is a really good, about 10-page summary of the financial activities of the city as a whole. And it gives a lot of discussion about variances from one year to the next or variances from budget to actual. And it was written by management. It's not written by us. We just make sure that the information is consistent with our audited statements. So again, a very good summary if you don't have the time to go through the whole document. What I think I'd like to do is focus on your general fund. Let's take a look at that. That's kind of the heart and soul of the city's operations where most of the revenues and expenditures flow through. If you turn to page, let's see. If you turn to pages, I think it's 17 and 18, it's the balance sheet of your governmental funds. And you'll see that very first column is labeled "General Fund." Give you all time to find it. That first column with the general fund, you can see you had total assets of about 3.2 million. And of course, this is June 30, 2013. That's just a snapshot in time. So it could be quite different right now. But as of June 30th, you had about 3.2 million in assets. Your liabilities totaled about 607,000 with some, what is now called deferred inflows of resources, which is really like deferred revenues, of about 266,000. So all total, just under $900,000 of liabilities and deferred revenues. And that leaves your fund balance of the general fund at 2.3 million, with the large part of that as unassigned, meaning it has not been restricted by a third party and it's not in some kind of a non-spendable format like inventory. That's an asset, but it's not spendable. So again, your fund balance is about 2.3 million. You can see that on page 18 in that first column. That 2.3 million is actually a decrease from the previous year. If you turn to the next two pages, you can see in that first column again, your general fund. Total revenues were about 9.7 million and total expenditures were about 10.8 million. So your expenditures exceeded your revenues by about 1.1 million. You did transfer in about $600,000, as you can see on the next page, from other funds. So it left you all with a deficit for the year of about 539,000. And that's what dropped your fund balance from about 2.8 million to 2.3 million. Another good thing to look at is if you turn a couple more pages, on page, I think it's 22, you can look at your general fund budget-to-actual comparison. How did you all actually end up as compared to how you budgeted in the early part of the year? And you can see your revenues came in about $1 million under what you all had budgeted, which is not really what you all wanted, but fortunately you recognized that, that that was happening. And as you can see, when you start looking at your expenditures, just following that, all of the departments, their expenditures were under budget as well. So as you all recognize that the revenues weren't coming in, the departments were holding tight on costs. So, you know, while your budget-to-actuals, you see these variances. Fortunately, where you see variances in one, you see offsetting variances in the expenditures as well. And you can, the detail of that flows on for a couple more pages. I guess one other thing y'all may be interested in looking at, the water and sewer fund. On pages 25 and through 27 is the balance sheet. Page 28 is where you can see the revenues and expenses in that first column of the water and sewer fund. You had total revenues in your water and sewer fund of about 7.3 million, total expenses of just over 6 million. So you had operating income, which is income generated from your normal operations. It didn't include transfers in or out. It didn't include any interest paid on debt or anything like that. You had operating income of about 1.28 million. If you turn to the next page, you can see you all had a little bit of interest revenue. You had some interest expense. The fair value of your investments, there is a little bit of an investment in that water and sewer fund tied into some of the bonds. There was a fair value decrease in that, which that swings from year to year depending on the market. But you ended up with income before any contributions or transfers of just under $700,000. And you received capital contributions of just over $1 million, with the bulk of that coming from SPOS funds that were expended for water and sewer fund purposes. Those are considered capital contributions. Also, well, actually, they all, this year, all of those were from the SPOS fund. Sometimes you'll have developers that will contribute things as well, but this is all from the SPOS fund. And then you transferred out $600,000 to your general fund, which is not unusual. A lot of the governments that I work with that have these enterprise-type funds, because that really is more of the income generator than just your general fund, they will transfer funds to help supplement sometimes the general fund operations, the operations of the government as a whole. But you did have an increase even after that transfer of just under 1.2 million dollars in your water and sewer fund. So all bond covenants met. You know, the water and sewer fund continues to operate very well. Solid waste fund as well. It's unusual for a solid waste fund to, a lot of times we see break even, usually losing money with solid waste. It's just one of those things that most governments can't seem to get the charges to cover the costs. But you've all been able to do that for a number of years. So hats off to you for being able to do that, because you all did have an increase in the net position of the solid waste fund of about $400,000 for the year. The rest of the financial statements is just a lot of detail about these funds we've talked about, as well as some of your other funds, like your SPOS fund and hotel motel tax fund. You've got a lot of just little funds, but the thing about those is that whatever those revenue streams are, they're earmarked for something else. They can't be spent on general government operations. So that's, they're considered special revenue funds. And a lot of times, with the exception of SPOS, whatever comes in is going out for that specific purpose. So it's your general fund and your water sewer that really contribute most of that activity and the operations of the city. But again, footnotes follow this. There's a lot of statistical information. You all did not undergo a single audit this year because you did not spend in excess of $500,000 of federal funds. I believe y'all did last year and the year before, but this year you fell short of that, which meant there was not a lot of the extra compliance work that had to be done. So those reports would not be in here this year. Again, if you all have questions after you take a look at this document in greater detail, please don't hesitate to contact me or I'm happy to come back and talk again if there's, you know, a lot of questions. The other document that you have is one that we put together, this one here. And I think most of you all are familiar with it, because we've been doing this for a while. The standards that guide us as auditors require that we communicate certain things to you all. And I could stand up here for 30 or 45 minutes and communicate those to you, or I can put them in writing and let you all kind of look at those at your leisure. And so that's kind of what we've chosen to do. And then we've also put in here some graphs with the general fund, water sewer fund, solid waste fund, just to kind of show you, sometimes pictures speak louder than words, to kind of show you the revenues and the expenses of those funds. And then we've also got in here some of the findings and recommendations that came out of our audit process this year. So if you would, turn to, let's see. Some of this we've already been over, talking about the financial statements and the opinion. If you turn to page six, you can see the pie charts that show you the different revenue sources and expenditure sources. And you all are a little bit unusual in that property taxes are not just in and of itself, I guess, the largest source of revenue always. This year, property taxes are the biggest source, but when you group the other taxes together, that actually exceeds what you all receive in property taxes. So there's a few governments that are like that. But overall, property taxes, sales tax, and your other taxes make up the large majority of where you all get your revenues. And then, of course, down below the expenditures, as with all other governments, public safety is the largest by far expenditure that you all incur, followed by just your general government and public works. And that's very common in governments, all governments, regardless of the size, is that public safety generally far exceeds the others, other expenditures. The following page will show you, it's a bar graph that'll show you the fund balance history of the general fund for the past five years. As you can see, the past couple of years, really due to the economy and just the slowdown of, I guess, everything in general, your fund balance has come down. It was a high of 3,583 in 2010. It's now 2.3 million. Not anything uncommon, not anything that we're not seeing in other places as well. While I think the economy is starting to come back, especially in certain areas, the majority of governments we work with have taken big hits to their general fund fund balance. The revenue sources that are out there are, I won't say fixed, but it's very difficult to find new revenue sources while expenditures continue to increase. So you all are going through the same thing that all governments are, you know, trying to find ways to cover the costs. But you still have, you know, fund balance at June 30, 2013 of about 2.3 million. You all incur expenditures of about $900,000 a month. So, you know, if you do the math, you've got about, I can't even do math right now. About two to three months of expenditures on hand at June 30th. And that carries you through till you start collecting the bulk of your revenues in the fall, which is those property taxes. So while it's, you know, it'd be great to increase that fund balance, we know the challenges that all governments are facing right now, you know, to be able to hold on and, you know, increase the revenues and hold on to those expenses. So, the next page, you can see a couple of graphs related to the water and sewer fund and the solid waste fund. We talked about these already, how you all, both these funds are generating positive cash flows where your revenues are certainly exceeding your expenses in both of those funds. The next few pages, pages nine through 11, these are the items I was referring to that we're required to communicate to you all. And a lot of it we've talked about, the financial statements themselves, how they're the responsibility of management, that there's certain accounting policies that are in place and it's the city's responsibility for those policies. Certain estimates and judgments are inherent in the audit and we looked at those and felt that they were adequate in the procedures that we performed. We did make some audit adjustments and we'll talk about a couple of those in a minute to the books. Not a significant number, but we did make some. You can see on the bottom of page 10, we did have one uncorrected misstatement related to pooled cash. And pooled cash is a difficult animal in that you've got basically one account that you're allocating out to the various funds. So there was a difference there in the reconciliation process. And I think that's being looked into. It's actually a much smaller difference than what we've seen in the past. And I think that's getting rectified. Page 11 goes through some more of the required communications. No significant issues during the year, no independence issues with the city and our firm. Page 12, and the next couple of pages, there were some items that we reported as findings in our audit this year. The first one is one that we had, we had last year that had to do with pooled cash and that reconciliation of it. And I know each year that we've had to make some adjustments and sometimes when you start making adjustments to cash during the audit, that kind of throws cash going forward. But I know that's being worked on, but there were some adjustments that had to be made to the pooled cash this year. And then there was still that little bit that were out. But I believe that's being worked on to get that rectified. On page 13, we did have some adjustments that we had to make in the special purpose sales tax fund this year. Adjustments are not necessarily considered findings. It's just when they, depending on the dollar amount and whether that dollar amount is considered material to that fund. And in this case, there were a couple of adjustments that we had to make to deferred revenues and revenues related to some grant reimbursements that we had to make in that fund. But again, they were audit adjustments. They weren't, it wasn't anything missing or underhanded. It was just some audit adjustments and that we're required to report as findings. The next finding that we had related to your inventory accounts, we had some trouble with inventory when we got the detailed listings. They didn't, the number times individual price wasn't footing across when we did our test counts, as we always do, of inventory. Some of what we counted was not agreeing with what they had. The unit prices, when we did a price test and looking at the invoice for the item versus what they had on their list, the dollar amounts were way off in some cases. And it did result in us having to actually make an adjustment to decrease the inventory by about $50,000. And we're just recommending that the departments in charge of that inventory really pay special attention to, and monitor that detailed listing of inventory. I do not believe they use a perpetual system, meaning it's not updated as soon as things are added or taken out of inventory. I think they do that on a periodic, I know they do that on a periodic basis. And may want to look at doing a perpetual system with more frequent counts to make sure that items aren't disappearing. I mean, small items can disappear like that. Not that we saw any of that. It's just one of those things that can occur in that type of environment. Page 14, we also made some audit adjustments related to liabilities. There were some accounts payable and accrued expenses that were not properly recorded. And so we made audit adjustments for those. And again, because the dollar amount of these adjustments were material to that fund that we made them in, they were considered findings. And then finally, we had to make an adjustment for the recording of a capital lease. You all entered into a lease agreement this year, well, June 30, 2013, for the lease of the number of police vehicles. And that was not recorded correctly. And so one of our audit adjustments was to undo and correct that, the recording of that capital lease. And those were the actual findings. They've all been discussed with the finance department and Mr. Jarrett, and they're all being worked on. Certainly, the audit adjustments related to the receivables and the payables, I think that, you know, that's just one of those things that happens. You know, we usually have audit adjustments wherever we go of that nature. And I think the others are being looked into and hopefully that, these won't be, these won't be reoccurring. We did have a couple of recommendations. You can see those on page 15. Again, these are just recommendations. You can take them or not. We did notice that there's a segregation of duties issue as related to payroll and changes that are made to master files for vendors and employee information. And we've talked about this subsequent to our audit. And I think, you know, there are some procedures in place to make sure that duties are segregated among employees and that someone is periodically reviewing some of these detailed lists and the changes that get made to master files. And I know they're working on strengthening those controls. Due-to-from accounts. During the course of the year, there are funds that are transferred from one fund to another or loan from one fund to another, just on a short-term basis. They get repaid. A lot of different things that occur. But we noticed that the due-to-from accounts were not changing from the previous year. They were the same amounts. None of them significant, but they are, usually they get repaid and, you know, there's constant activity in those. And that wasn't happening. So we're just recommending that the finance department take a look at those balances and see what's making them up and get them resolved. Again, they're small amounts, but they need to be moving. They need to be repaid and not just sit there at those same amounts. Also, with the risk management fund, there's a significant balance that is due from the risk management fund to the water fund. This stemmed from a number of years back when some investment monies were moved over into the risk management fund, because at one time you all had a very significant liability there related to a couple of long-term claims. Most of those claims have subsequently been settled for actually a lot less than what was estimated. And so the funds that are, there are funds there to repay the water and sewer fund. We're just recommending that that be looked at as to whether you need to go ahead and pay that money back to the water and sewer fund or whether it's going to stay there to continue to offset the expenses as opposed to the general fund and the water fund transferring money into that risk management fund every month to cover costs, if you're just going to use that money that's there. Either way, we need to make, or not we, management needs to make a decision as to how they want to handle that, because we can't just let that due-to-from just sit there. It's too big of an amount. We either need to repay the water fund or start writing it off as, basically, as a substitute for transferring money to cover expenses. So I know that may not have made complete sense and I'm glad to go back through that. But again, we talked about this with finance. Mr. Jarrett's very aware of it and there's a plan to take care of that in the current year. And then finally, there's just a couple of funds that the city has had out there for a long time, but I think have like $25 in them or something. We're just recommending that you may want to, rather than having to deal with those bank reconciliations every month and deal with that fund activity every month, because there's really no activity, you may want to consider closing those. There's a chip fund that's left from a DCA grant. And then there's a silver-haired legislature fund that has been there for quite a while. I think y'all actually got some, got a grant twice for that. Not sure that that grant's out there anymore, so you may want to consider closing that as well. I figured. And like I said, all of these have been discussed with management, finance department. And I think they're working on those. The rest of the document really just kind of covers a lot of the standards that are out there on the horizons that will have to be implemented in the coming years. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board never stops. They always find things to change and update and really cause chaos for most of our governmental clients. Most of these that are in here either were effective this year with really little to no effect, or in the next few years will be effective for you guys with little or no effect. The only one that I do want to point out to you, if you look on page 20, statement number 68, which is item H there, this is the one that everybody has been dreading. It will not be effective for you all until your June 30, 2015 fiscal year. But in a nutshell, this pronouncement is basically saying that whatever the unfunded actuarial liability is of your pension plan, you are going to have to now show that on the balance sheet, your government-wide balance sheet, not in your general fund, but in the big overall fund. You're going to have to show that as a liability. in the big overall fund, you're going to have to show that as a liability, and you've never had to show that before. At June 30, 2013, that liability was approximately 500, $5,385,000 for you guys. Um, and I know that's, I mean, that's a big liability for you all. We're seeing them in the, I mean, hundreds of millions of dollars for some of our larger clients. Um, so this is certainly not just for you guys. Um, again, the liability has always been there, um, it's just now that the standard is coming out, you're going to have to record it on your books as a liability. Um, it's not going to really change anything about the way that you operate the pension plan. Um, and you all actually are, um, pretty well-funded, um, compared to most governments that we work with. I think the state likes to see, um, the state wants you to be at least 75% funded, and I think you all are, are over that point. Um, again, it's not effective for two, until 2015, it's just something that you guys need to know, there's really not anything that you can do about it, um, unless you all just happen to have an extra $5.3 million you wanted to pop in that, um, pension plan. But again, just something for you all to be aware of so that in a couple of years, you don't look at your financial statements and say, wait a minute, nobody told me that was going to be on there. Um, so just something to, to think about and, um, fortunately you all aren't one of the governments that have the hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars that are going to have to go on there. Um, I know that was very brief, um, kind of an overview, so if you all have any additional questions, I'm more than happy to address them. The finance department, Shay, Brenda, they have my contact information as always, and, or if you have any questions this evening, I'm glad to, to address those, um, you know, as best I can.
Counsel, any questions at the moment? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and I appreciate really the hard work of the finance department. They do a great job of getting, getting together what we need and, and ma, making our job run a little smoother.
Thank you. It's no old business, we'll move to new business. I'll ask the clerk if he would read resolution 013 and caption, please.
To authorize Mayor Richard A. Billigh to sign an initial project assessment and application on behalf of the city of Millersville to apply for Georgia City's foundation revolving loan funds and for Georgia Department of Community Affairs Downtown Development revolving loan funds on behalf of 101 South Wayne Street LLC for the construction of loft apartments and commercial space to be located at 101 South Wayne Street.
Counsel, I'll entertain a resolution on that. Excuse me, a motion on that resolution?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Here and then ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye. That passes, thank you. Next, I'd ask the clerk to read resolution 014 and caption, please.
To authorize contract with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for placement of antenna on the McMillan Island water tank.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
My question would be, second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Here and then ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Uh, next, ask the clerk to read resolutions 015 and caption, please.
To authorize Mayor Richard A. Billigh to enter into a rental agreement with Georgia Duplicating Projects Incorporated, Products, excuse me, Incorporated to renew the lease for a copier in the business office.
Counsel, entertain a motion. Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Here and then ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Uh, council members, this is not on your agenda, so we'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add, uh, a movement into an executive session to discuss a legal and real estate matter.
Motion to amend the agenda to include moving into legal session, executive session to discuss a legal and, and property matter.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Here and then ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, I jumped, Dr. Lee, sorry about that. Thank you. The, um, agenda is amended to add that item, and I'll entertain a motion to move into, uh, stated executive session.
So moved. Second.
Have a, uh, motion in a second, any discussion? Here and then ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll give us, uh, just a moment, we'll, uh, retire into executive session, we'll be back with you shortly. Thank you.
Call the meeting order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
We do have a quorum present, no action was taken in our executive session. If there's no further business, come before counsel, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any opposed? Here and then we adjourn.